Very shortly thereafter. So maybe approval of the agenda, please.
Some.
Councilor Dibl moving.
Second.
Chair second. Counselor Mellock, thank you. We can second it. All those in favor? Counselor, all who carries. Doubt should the minutes that convene the whole meeting, please? Okay, move it on. Okay, Counselor Mellock moving. Second there, Counselor Stewart. Questions or comments? Good minutes again, well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Everyone's in favor and soon. And then we have our architect here pertaining to the station house. So maybe we get Mr. Fortowski to introduce this.
Your worship, Counsel, good evening. I'll have my colleague Kevin do a more detailed introduction, but just to set the stage again where we're at, Counsel had decided to have an architect to come involved in the process as was recommended and as was mentioned earlier through the process. So this is the point where we have an architect, we have some rough drawings and some details. So I really don't want to steal too much thunder, and I'll pass it on to Kevin.
Good evening, your worship, Counsel. I'm happy to have Mr. Jeff Lawler here today. He's been working with staff on the station house drawings. And what he's brought forward here tonight is some preliminary auctions to give Counsel an idea of what the building could look like, the form and function, auctions for the building. And really, tonight, it's the opportunity for Counsel to ask questions of Mr. Lawler and really have their first look at the potential for the building, as well as the general public to also have their first look at the potential for the building. And Counsel will recall that they did commit to public consultation. So I think that tonight, decisions aren't going to be made on specific auctions. This will be more of a presentation on what those auctions look like. Moving forward into public consultation in the near future, Counsel will get public feedback on the building, and at that point in time, some decisions can be made on options.
I have a sneaky suspicion we won't get feedback.
So without further ado, Mr. Jeff Lawler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to present these ideas. They're a combination of discussions I've had with Mr. Dickens, exploring some early planning options that are available and some technical issues that surround the building itself. So I'll make a start by just going through how these slides are organized. Dealing with the planning options first, four options. The first two cover the main and basement floors and as well as the second floor. The third and fourth are options for that second floor only, and the implications that they have on the main floor. Then I'll go through some building code issues that surround the building and will apply to any kind of solution that you adopt. I won't deal with them in detail with a certain background information, things that have to be addressed. And then lastly, I want to address the exterior appearance. You maybe have seen from the slides already that I've assumed the building would take on its current appearance, but there are other options that you might want to consider in terms of colors and materials and patterns that other railway stations have used in the past. So I'll start at the beginning, which is a good place. Option one, and this would be the main floor. There's three elements, four elements, to the plan on the main floor. One is the museum area itself. The second is the entry, which would serve as the visitor center. Third would be the office area, and fourthly, the washrooms that have to be provided. In this particular case, I was trying to maintain a private access between the office area and the museum and the visitor center. So there's a public area at the front with access to washrooms, private access area at the back exclusively for staff, but also giving access to what I'm assuming at this point would be a mechanical room on the upper level. There has been discussion about the number of washrooms. The second option will describe a different version of the washrooms, but this is more than the building code would require, and is what I've termed the extended washrooms. We require a handicap washroom, one male, but we have additional female washrooms here. There's a small kitchen being shown, there was a request for this, and a small janitor room. Entry I'm suggesting would be through this portion at the front of the building, slightly extended, and it would be into an open area with a reception desk and a video display areas in here for local information. Access to the museum would be through these doors, through an existing sheer wall, and exiting from all the spaces would be to the front of the building. There's an issue here around this exit and the existing balcony, but generally, the exits come through to the front in all cases, avoiding issues we have on the balcony. The lower level for this option would have, again, a mechanic room at the bottom, some storage, washrooms, with a central access point serving as a lobby, providing access to shop areas either side. I'm suggesting here that access would be off this lobby, which could be extended depending upon the usage that might arise for these. They're capable of being rented in either this large single space or divided into two on both sides, with a condensed or extended corridor in front. The upper level here retains the existing opening in the floor to access it, which would be a new staircase, fairly steep, directed into a mechanical room which would serve ventilation requirements for the office area, washrooms, and the museum space. Option two modifies that main floor. It keeps the original sheer wall, so we don't have to open it. The public space is altered so that we access it from the back through an existing opening and wall, but this would require that the existing floor opening be closed and a new one be cut for access to the mechanical room above. And you see here that there's an amended washroom. This is, now, the exact count of washroom facilities is subject analysis at the end of the day, but it's looking like this would be a minimum requirement by code, handicap wash with one male or two females. That does allow exiting from the office area to the front of the building without the complications of using the existing balcony, which has a fire rating issue. The lower level, in this case, I'm suggesting there's an option here for direct access to the shop areas from the exterior on both sides, which permits subdivision of these without any loss of floor area. That would keep the central lobby with access to washrooms just in the same area, but the door access would be just to the lobby. The exact configuration of the mechanical room is yet to be resolved. The washrooms, it may be, can be squeezed into the back area, but for the moment, I'm showing this arrangement as a probable solution. As I say, on the second floor, the floor space, the opening in the floor for the existing stairs would have to be closed off and a new one added here, but it would serve the same purpose as option one, providing an HVAC room for ventilation of the upper floor. On the lower floor, that mechanical room will be serving the lower floor only, at least that's the intention, the thinking at this point. We keep the existing electrical service in this corner. The third option concerns this second floor. There was discussion about it being used as office space. It can be done, but at a cost. The existing opening would have to be modified because it wouldn't provide headroom for the stairs that are required, but it could be done. But the stairs require enclosure and direct exit to the outside, so it has a significant effect on the main floor. Perfectly possible, we keep the sheer wall here, but museum access is restricted at this point. It's a small door at the back, not the best from a visual point of view, but there's still a sizable visitor center, and the washroom discussion is the same here as it is on the previous two. We'd be keeping the reception desk here, the kitchen, and access to the office area here. Fourth option would be simply to keep this second floor as an attic. We close off the floor opening and just introduce a ceiling hatch as access to it. That does open up the entire public area on the main floor because there are no stairs impacting on it. It would be a large open space, reception area at the back, same issues with the washroom. So those are the planning options that have been discussed to date, and no doubt there are many more ideas that can be discussed, maybe suggested. And I'll just go through now some of the building code issues that will apply regardless of the solutions that want to be pursued. The building has three main occupancies: museum, and mercantile, and office, and they're following this group A2, D, and E, each with their own constructional requirements for the building in terms of fire ratings and floor separations. I'm assuming at this point that we don't want to sprinkle the building because of the The issue that comes up immediately is that each of these groups applies as though to the whole building, even though the use of the building is restricted to a small part of it. And so in a group D, I can have a three-story building that's not sprinkled, I can have the same in a mercantile one, but in an A2, if I end up with a three-story building, I have to sprinkle it, there are no options. But there is one little exception in the code for a limited occupancy for an A2. Now, this is a museum. If we can restrict the occupancy to 30 people, it can be classified as a D for the purposes of construction, which means I don't have to sprinkle it. It sounds like a lot of tedious technicality, but it's significant in terms of construction and cost. That may be something you would consider or not, but that would only apply if we had office space on the upper level, because if it's a mechanical room and/or an attic, it's a two-story building, and we don't have to sprinkle it regardless. As I say, it's technicalities that I wrestle with when I look at the different planning options that we have to deal with. But these ratings, I'm assuming, will apply to on the two-story building. The other part of the code that applies is a separation of these groups, E to A2, and there's a D to E. They all have, these have two fire separation requirements in these different parts of code. So if we combine the last two slides, we end up with these fire ratings that are required in the building. A two-hour rated floor separation here with two-hour support for it, 45 minutes to the upper level, 45-minute support, and a 45-minute rated roof. The complication is this little balcony, because it also requires a 45-minute rating and a 45-minute rated support. Currently, it doesn't have that. It would be required to be fire rated with heavier timber supports to meet code. Typically, this is done with heavy timber construction. That has not been done with this construction, so it's an ongoing problem for consideration. There is the complication of the concealed spaces at the end. It's particularly bad at the east end, but it also occurs at the west. This is a serious fire hazard, and the floor above is a potential exit route from the office area with no protection or fire rating. So this is something that must be addressed, I think, regardless. This whole issue is really subject to ongoing discussion as to solutions. You need a good guardrail, a compliant guardrail for this private balcony. You have a partial one at the front, but that kind of construction should be extended around the building. The code is quite explicit in terms of its, it's also subject to, we call ashtray, this is the American Society heating ventilation. They published a document which has been adopted by the DC Building Code, which requires it takes certain insulation requirements into consideration when you build, and you will require to comply wherever possible with it. Because part of this building is existing, exterior walls, we would probably have to modify that, but not in a way that it would detract from these insulation requirements. And I am suggesting here that we can add that there are 38 batts required, nothing unconventional about that. A frame wall is a little different to what we may have experienced. The ashtray requirements don't apply to housing, so this requirement would be unfamiliar to anybody not doing commercial work, but there's a requirement for continuous insulation on the exterior of a frame wall, and Zone 6 is where you would be. I, this would require confirmation of building inspection, but I think it's a rational assessment. This forces you to have two inches of mineral wall insulation on the exterior of the building. Typically, you see this in commercial work, but on metal cliffs, they don't have the issue of that insulation of the frame walls, and we'd add rigid insulation to the foundation walls as part of the general ashtray requirement. Regardless of the planning solution, this issue has to be addressed with insulation. This is the appearance of the current building with these window and door opening changes to suit the plans that I've drawn, but they're all subject to change. Assumed that this boarding siding, horizontal six-inch exposure, would occur over the batts and strapping that would be required for ashtray compliance, but generally, the appearance would be horizontal siding. I suggest that you use something like audi board, a cement fiber board, and apply that to the building. Now, it works fairly well for the single-story building. Little playing on a two-story, and it got me thinking about what other options there might be. So I started exploring what was available. These are other railway stations that have been developed. I did a Google search, and these are the Western Canada ones, so look, this particular one, I think he's from the east. Some options here, and I don't think are appropriate. Brick is actually a very common material throughout Canada, but unusual in this location. This siding, in fact, is very common and quite appropriate to this design. This particular one is from Port Moody, which is a restored railway station. I haven't had any discussion with staff as to the overall appearance you might want from the building, we might want to consider. We'd want more than plain siding to this building. Again, it's subject to further discussion and development, but horizontal siding, vertical siding, wooden button, textured with shakes, all of these are possible, even with the cement fiber board. This was a suggestion for the way forward. We were reviewing this current proposal. There might be many others that will come out of discussion, either from Counsel, from staff, or of public. Building consultants have been appointed, structural, mechanical, electrical. If there's any kind of consensus from tonight or very soon, I would ask that these consultants prepare a preliminary report based on the existing building and a probable proposal in terms of developing a coherent system for the building. I just received site point information and have to develop that, but there's a big issue with site access. You're looking to accommodate coaches, access onto the sites, and exit permit is problematic, and there's a significant amount of civil engineering work that will be required to accommodate access, ingress, and the parking, both for colors and coaches. Depending upon your level of comfort with the scale of the project, we have to address costing, the appointment of a consultant for that. That could be done in a preliminary basis on the basis of building drawings that are prepared even now, but I would like to see these engineering consultants have their input before finalizing any probable costs. Obviously, the more advanced the drawings are, the more set the design is, the more specific it is, the more accurate the casting is. The earlier that we do it, the more, well, the less accurate it is, the greater the range of probable cost it will be. And I'm not sure at this point how comfortable Counsel is with the overall scale and cost of the project. That's a quick run-through. I could go through it in detail if you wish, but I'd entertain questions and discussion if that's...
Well, Mr. Lawler, a good initial kick at it. Couple of quick things, I'm sure everyone on Counsel will have some questions, but I'll maybe kick it off here. I may be a male with poor coffee retention skills, but the male washroom there looks a little bit light on accommodation, and I think if we stick to that, there might be some trees in the neighborhood high in nitrogen, so, if you know what I'm saying here. So I think there might be an opportunity here to up the game a little bit as far as accommodations for the washrooms.
We can always add more, the code is a minimum.
Yeah, yeah. And as I'm sure Kevin has passed on to you, there's been significant discussion from Counsel that, you know, we need adequate washroom facilities, because some people will stop here for a quick trip to the men's or ladies' room and also tourist info, but washrooms are important, these kind of facilities.
Public assembly buildings are always a problem, typically because there's usually some entertainment taking place there, and then there's a break. Everybody uses a washroom at the same time. For that reason, the building code actually requires twice as many female washrooms as male in public buildings. They have extensive tables for the calculation of this, and actually, this would normally be considered sufficient for this kind of building. I think, I believe the issue you have here is that you get coach loads of people that come and descend all at once, so your requirements exceed code, and really, you can have as many as we can accommodate as you think are appropriate. In this particular case, we're only required to have two, sorry, I'm missing that, but there should be four. So we actually have four for the ladies, and we only require two. Men's is one, but the nature of the handicap washroom is often misunderstood. It is available for anyone's use at any time, it's priority handicap, so you have a second male if you get a lot of men coming. It doesn't have to be restricted just for handicap. If you want more than this, it's more problematic. We've got, I put in a janitor room here, and we need one somewhere, and it has to have plumbing, so this area has all the plumbing in it. We could put another washroom in here, but now I've got to move the janitor and the kitchen out, it becomes quite small, but it's a discussion we can have as to what needs to be done.
And kicking out towards the office would be a more complicated arrangement, I guess.
Adding someone here?
Yeah.
Well, you can see from the size of this and the access requirements, it's a five-foot stone, a five-foot aisle, we're left with a corridor for the office to try and double it. Perhaps you're thinking of targeting the office upstairs, that's an option, but there is an issue there about handicapped access to the upper level, which can only be solved if you retain some office on the main floor. Perhaps we could double this or extend it into the office area? I hadn't thought about the consequences of that, but I'm sure there's a way to resolve it if you wish to have more. Is there any particular figure that you would like to target or adding?
Well, in my personal opinion, as more than one is a must.
Okay.
You know, because you go to any tourist info center, and there's usually a lineup at any given time during the tourist season, so...
The reality is, no matter how many you have, lots are hundreds. Whenever a bus arrives, there will be a lineup. Obviously, the more washrooms, the quicker the lineup will disappear, but you will always have one.
But even if a person had, like, in the male washroom, a couple of urinals, and then a toilet, then at least you got a little extra flow, so to speak.
That would require that entire space with a handicap washroom moving out. Yes, I mean, these things are possible, yes.
Okay, comments from Counsel, I'm sure there will be many. Okay, Counsel craft?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome and thanks for coming. I appreciate seeing the effort put out there, it looks really good, you've given us some huge, good thought here. A couple of things I was wondering about based on occupancy. So would the floor plan be irrelevant as far as occupancy is concerned? So 30 versus 100, or...
Typically, occupant loads are calculated on area, and there are different tables for different uses. There isn't a particular one for museums, but if you start to apply these tables rationally, you'd probably end up with 50 or 60 people here in a normal calculation for your museum. But given, this is a little larger than a school classroom, and you've got a lot of exhibits in here, restricting it to 30 is not unreasonable, because by the time you take these out of the floor area calculation, you're not going to get too many more than that in any way. So 30 is, if you wanted to pursue that with a three-story building, it's office space above. It's a rational way of doing it. It wouldn't be an unreasonable restriction, I think, in my mind.
So for the whole building, would there be a maximum occupancy for the whole building at any one given time?
The code doesn't address maximum occupancy of the entire building. It's more concerned with occupancy within spaces for exiting purposes, because it's on the basis of that occupancy that these exit doors are calculated, how many we need. I mean, I could total the individual parts at the end of the day, but it's not an applied to any particular thing.
I see. Okay, well, I appreciate that, and the only one other thing that I had, I was wondering about when I had been reading these at home was the exit and entrance level, like, is there going to be, if we had three floors in use, for example, the basement area could have more exits, I would assume?
But they would only apply to the basement itself.
Right.
I haven't calculated for here, I'm assuming at this point that I can exit everything out of here from this side, everything out of here through this side. Maybe I have to introduce a second one, but the exiting is calculated on the use of that room getting to the outside, the use of that room getting to the outside. It's not a building issue, it's an individual room and exit route issue.
Right. I'm just thinking about safety, fire hazards and that. I want to make sure we have lots of exits, right?
The code does address it quite specifically.
Okay, thank you very much, that's excellent. Thank you very much, that's excellent.
Counselor Higginson?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again for the drawings. One thing I'm questioning is the mechanical rooms. They're fairly large. Now, if we took, if we took and made the upper floor office space, we'd have plenty enough room in the basement for the mechanical room to move downstairs if it's just an air exchanger and heat.
That's entirely possible.
Because there's that, what, eight or ten-foot ceiling, so we could put the venting all underneath that?
That is entirely possible. Um, the issue then is the ducting that's going vertical, so it's taken away from floor space. But that's one of the reasons I'd like to get a mechanical consultant on board with a preliminary idea so that we can investigate that, but, yes.
Because otherwise, it takes up quite a bit of space, takes the third floor up or the upper floor up, and quite a bit of space in the bottom here. Bottom here in the basement would probably accommodate the mechanical room easily from top. Then you could use it as office space up above.
Right. But if, but if you follow the rationale for that, it becomes a three-story building, I have to then limit, well, I have to avoid sprinkling, I have to limit the thirty to the museum size. But as I say, I don't think the thirty is an unreasonable restriction anyway, so.
Just to clarify, the thirty is, is a, is a, sort of almost an hypothetical amount because obviously if there's more than thirty in there, no one's getting kicked out, it might get a little cozy, but it's a case of, from a planning point of view, obviously that's what it's.
I, I think you, did I see a notice somewhere in here, there's a look occupancy here? It's very common, you'll see that fire marshals put these notices up and you're supposed to observe them. That's the limit, that's what the exiting will handle. It's, as I say, it's, it's very, very common where you've got spaces of room, but it's not intended to, to have wall-to-wall people standing. You restrict the number to suit the, suit the actual number you expect or want to have in there, host a number accordingly. A fire marshal's charge was enforcing that. It might, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it requires some management to, to enforce it. I mean, it, it starts like a busload of people, where most of the people want to go in, so you can, you can deal with the busload at a time. The thirty is specific in the code, unfortunately, it's not, that's.
So I like the option number one for the, the main floor, but I like option two for the basement because it has individual doors coming into these spaces.
And they can be combined.
Yeah.
Counselor Dunn?
So moving forward, we're going to have some public consultation. I'm wondering if we can have some pros and cons lists of, of the various options because you've said if you go three-story, then we have to look at a sprinkler system. And I know that we don't want to be, um, we don't want to have a bias as one way or the other, but I'm just wondering for the general public, not knowing, you know, the various elements and, and engineering parts to it, if we can say, you know, this potentially is the most cost-effective based on the fact that we don't have to do a sprinkler system and this is what we can get around.
I, I can attempt to do that, some of the discussion is of a circular nature.
Yeah.
So a strict list of pros and cons might be actually hard to put together, but I, I can attempt to.
I mean, I mean, you've identified a few with the various options already. And we don't want to be too restrictive, but yet giving the general public an understanding of what's the, you know, what some of the restrictions are based on some of the options.
Right.
Counselor Law?
Thank you. There's some questions about process, I suppose. So at, at what point of a renovation like this does the facility need to be upgraded to current building code?
Whenever you do something, you're required to, when you change the use of the building, you're required to raise it to current code wherever it's reasonably possible. And that's a discussion with the building inspector.
Okay, the reason I ask is, you know, this project has morphed significantly from the idea years ago. And we were told by our building inspector at that time that we could have just moved into the building, used the space as it was without any modifications, that we could have been in there making the museum, but then things changed and we got, uh, we got into some renovations and some structural repairs, things that happened that were good. So I'm trying to figure out where the scale sort of tipped into now talking about, you know, like while I use the example in your report here about the timbers on the outside, I mean, that was designed by the same engineer that you have listed here, Kirkoff, and okayed by our building inspector. So I'm trying to figure out why it was said now that we're saying it doesn't meet code, like was there something that triggered that, that now this has to go into the new building as opposed to a renovation type of situation?
Hard to read a comment on what happened before I was involved.
So I guess that's a good question too then, where, um, what information have you been given? And does that change your design based on where we're at in the process?
If the upgrade to code is possible, it should be done. I mean, what do you, what do you ask?
I'm not asking for an unsafe building or anything like that, I'm just wondering.
It's a public, a public building.
Because it changed, because it was a public space, it was used as a, you know, multi-occupant building, like it was a, maybe not a public as far as taxpayer-owned, but it just seems to have changed quite a bit over the last bit of time here.
I can't comment on the thinking that went into what it was before. All I'm saying is, if you, if you want to do this to it, then these are the upgrades you should be incorporating.
Should be or must?
The code says must, you should do it.
Should and must. See where I'm foggy here? If it was a kind of dry thing that said, if you are doing a renovation that changes these aspects, you must do this, then I'd be completely understanding. But when it's, you should do this, it's recommended, here's some great ideas, you know, like there's lots of buildings that are currently not up to the, the standard of today's building code, but they're used every day.
When you do renovations to the building, you're required to upgrade it to current code wherever it's reasonably possible. This is a significant renovation, so the new code would apply. I, I can't comment on the history of the projects. I realize it was a single-story building somewhere else, it was moved here, the lower floor is added. I don't know what its uses have been in the past.
I think some history would be helpful in, in moving forward, there's, you have the slide with the railing, you know? I think everybody in staff should know that that's not the intended finished product. It was just to make it safer than no railing. And that one small section that you commented that should be the rest, that was built as a sample to show us what was possible if we were to use wood versus doing aluminum or, or vinyl or whatever it would be. So everything got put on hold, so they didn't complete that out, right? But I think that kind of information is useful because I don't know how much time has been spent looking at that thinking, hey, this is a problem when we know it is, um, we're just looking to move forward with a, with a completed design. I'm just trying to figure out, because you made the comment too about, um, you're not sure how comfortable council is with the overall cost, et cetera. I don't think council's really sure on the comfort level there either. I think it changes based on what we're looking at here, like if we're putting new roofs and party board and all this sort of thing versus other potential products that we could use or not do like roofs, um, or air conditioning systems and all of this, like that's going to change our comfort level, right? But it's sort of hard to come up with a comfort level until we have some sort of costing and overall concept, right? So I think the next, the most important steps are going to be the, the talking to the user groups and then the public to sort of get that vision, right?
Absolutely, that's what we're here. Mr. Dickon?
My worship through you. Building inspector, Ms. Gillingham did provide me with the section of the code that she was citing back in the day when the project began and was of considerably less scope than we're looking at now. And there is a section in Division A, Appendix A, that states it is not intended that the British Columbia Building Code be used to enforce the retrospective application of new requirements to existing buildings. So, you know, based on that limited scope back in the day and the limited budget associated with it, Ms. Gillingham was giving some leniency to the work that was happening there. Not from a safety perspective by any means, but from a, excuse me, from an upgrade perspective. So, you know, it's a hundred-year-old building and, uh, as Mr. Lawler indicated, with the studying that's in there now, you can't meet insulation requirements with batts of insulation on the inside. But I'm assuming, and I don't want to speak out of place, Mr. Lawler, with his professional accreditation, is trying to give us the best building he possibly can and meet as many of the existing codes as we possibly can with the building. And I don't see that as a bad thing, however, I do agree at a certain point in time, cost is going to dictate, you know, how far we can go and how, how much can go into this building. So I have talked to Mr. Lawler about cost and given him some, uh, history. I did provide him with previous reports and studies. You know, however, it is important to, to note that the scope did change on this project and, um, rather than dwell too much on the past, I think it might serve us better just to move forward. That's the way I, I choose to look at the building.
If I could just, if I could just comment, that position is entirely correct. If you, if the existing building was there and you just wanted to use it in the same way it's been used in the past, you wouldn't have to do anything to it. The problem comes when you start renovating it and changing it, then you have to upgrade it.
Yeah, and I think when we, when we first started off, the intent was put the tourist in, uh, info center in there, put the museum and leave the bottom just as storage, so on and so forth. Let's not get too fussy about the details, but upon further examination, of course, it makes a lot of sense to make full use of the entire building. Do it once, do it right, I guess was the intent of council at that point, and that's why we're sitting here today. You know, we, we didn't want to get into a position where we do work and then have to duplicate it in the future, like take out, uh, you know, additions that were put in a year or two before. And I think that was the, um, you know, the rationale behind this, sort of from a just value for money, due diligence to the taxpayers' point of view, so I think we're actually where we should be. I, I think although it's kind of a cumbersome birth, I think it's probably the right way to deliver, so. The work that was done by Van Hooch was good work, uh, engineering signed off on it. Quite frankly, on, on the patio issue, I think if that isn't up to the, the appropriate fire code, I think we have a little issue with our former contractor on that because we were, the engineer and, and contractor there, because if, if work was done that was not up to the appropriate code, then of course that's, that's an issue that has to be dealt with. Because the whole intent behind this project was that we would not have duplication at any stage, so. The, the conversation that I appreciated too was, um, putting all mechanical in the basement, something I personally were excited about, and having some office space up top. And then we could maybe kick out the washrooms a little further because we'd have less necessity for office space on the main floor, have some office space up on the top floor. But I mean, that's obviously something that would require, you know, appropriate public comment, appropriate council comment, not just one, one voice out of many, but from the point of view of making maximum use of a relatively small building, it makes sense to look at an option like that. Counselor Stuhl?
I'm just wondering, I'm having a bit of a memory lapse. Can you just remind me about the kitchen and what the intended use for that was? It seems rather large and maybe could be used for smaller washroom space.
If you don't, depends what you want, I mean, it can be as large or small as you dictate. What I'm showing here is a fridge, a sink, a stove, and a little bit of counter space. It's fairly narrow, which is unfortunate, these are existing walls, so that's a constraint.
Just a staff kitchen?
But if, it could be shorter and wider, um, and then we could get it double-sided and might take up less floor space, but that's certainly an issue that can be explored.
So the intention was just for a staff kitchen?
Just for lunches, that's, that was, that was my understanding of what was required.
You let lunches for the staff, not for the general public, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you for your clarification, I just had a memory lapse.
Additional comments from council?
Well, I just am wondering, um, so where do we go from here, basically? I mean, um, we've gotten a little brief outline of, of the suggested path forward. So, I mean, this is a big step in the right direction. I mean, obviously, cost is going to be a factor in anything we do because we, uh, we are constrained by money like any other municipality, I'm hoping. And, um, so when, when would we see, um, a public presentation? And then from there, we could look at those comments and suggestions and, um, probably, um, council would probably like to also have some input in, a little more input into the, the overall theme as well, I'm sure. Because there's things like, you know, for the kitchen, for example, yeah, it'd be great if it was just for staff, but I'm thinking about when we go to so many functions at the rec center and upstairs there, the one thing that they've always been complaining about is of people that go in there and bring stuff is, they like to have a kitchen, they like to have, it's very good that they have a bit of a kitchen there. So I don't want to eliminate that, for example, because even if you're having a museum gathering of thirty people or an art function or whatever, it could be used for in the future, you're still going to need to have a little bit of that area for, for providing some, um, refreshments and that, so. It, those kinds of things need to be discussed. I guess if we had a bit of a more, more of a feeling on what it was going to be used for ultimately at the end of the day, it'd probably give me a better idea of what option I'd like, for example. And also, um, uh, if we have the input from the public, then we could also get a feeling for really who will like to use it, really like to use it. Besides one group, more than one group will use it. I'd really like to have that feedback.
I can develop, uh, an extra option describing the things that have been discussed today and presented in this format or on mounted, uh, presentation boards within a week. So whenever you want to make it available to the public from that time on, it's, it's your call. Where we go from there, that's take your direction, really. It can happen fairly quickly.
Okay, super.
I'm sure.
I just have a question, Jeff. With your experience doing these kind of renovations, in the next week or two or three, would we possibly get an approximate cost? Uh, if you do a mediocre, like an average type building, not, not a school type or hospital type function, but like a mediocre, average, good, good structure, construction, would, is there any possibility to get a, a ballpark figure? You know, instead of saying it's going to cost, say, I'm going to go a million and a half to two hundred thousand, could you say it's going to cost in this ballpark? Is, is that possible?
Not within that immediate timeframe. I, um, I have discussed obtaining quotes from council consultants for, for their work. I don't have any terms of reference for them at the moment, but if you want a preliminary one and then a final one upon final drawings, I can approach them on that basis. But realistically, um, those numbers will be a month away, maybe six weeks.
So just a, a quick question from council. A quick question to be answered from council, I guess, would be, now, the concept of developing the third floor, having the mechanical in the basement and kicking out the washrooms a little larger, is that, is that a scenario that the majority of council will be keen on exploring at this point? As a, you know, as a potential option? Because if I'm a voice in the wilderness, then obviously I voted move on, but.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Just to explore.
To explore. And the washroom thing, it bothered me a little bit, but other than that, only any bigger washrooms.
We get one, we have one male washroom facility, period.
Well, there are some down below, but regardless.
But yeah.
It's an easy, it's an easy option to present, and to see what the implication is.
Yeah. So your, your realistic timeline on that, Mr. Lawler, would be?
I can have that done in a week.
Yeah. So now, I guess from a moving forward point of view, to have an actual formal public consultation where we have some, some drawings on easels or drawings available for everyone, there was also talk that we would have a meeting at the actual building at some point, just sort of to give people a sort of in-person look at the facility, because some people have not spent any time in there since it's been, since the interiors have been cleaned out, so to speak. So, I think that might be a good thing to do, to actually have a meeting there.
Your worship, when we looked at that meeting at the station house, I have to check my notes to be completely accurate with what I'm saying here, but we determined that there was a number of things that we have to do to actually have an assembly there for a meeting. It's really, realistically not feasible.
Well, maybe the, maybe the best plan would then be to do a, maybe a little pre-tour for people that are interested, a little walkabout, so that people could take a look at what's there now, just so the discussions are more fruitful.
I think certainly if we controlled the number of people that were in the building at any one time, we'd probably walk people through in small groups.
Yeah, I mean, I think that might be a good element to the, because from an engineering point of view, it's a safe structure, it's just obviously not finished, so, but to have a more fruitful discussion in the public input session would make sense, to have people walkabout, and then they could, I don't know, maybe I'm the only person that's very visual, but it's kind of nice to see exactly what you're talking about.
We can arrange that.
So, to identify a time, Mr. Lawler indicated that within a week, the additional scenario would be available. Perhaps we could do it before the next council meeting?
Your worship, I just want to put it out there that I think the approximate costing that was mentioned by Council Eric in particular, is an important piece of information for both you and the public moving forward. And I, I would suggest that if it's possible, council may want to wait till Mr. Lawler can get some approximate costing, so that option development moving forward will be informed by that information, because it would be, I think, kind of unfortunate if people sort of had in their mind now an option and everything, and then you price it out later, and then there's some sticker shock, as opposed to trying to get some of those costs hammered during the consultation process, for what's feasible versus what's possible, for your consideration, your worship.
I guess my, my personal objection to that is we really don't, we haven't identified what we're interested in yet, and I personally have the opinion, decide what you want first, and then you can, you know, see what's, see what's out there. A lot of the price deviation will be pertaining to quality finish, so, you know, you may go a cheaper siding, or you may want to go high-end and go some nice hardy board or something. So, the same, the same construction can cost, can have a number of different cost levels based on quality finish, or durability of finish, but I don't know, I think we have to identify what we want first. And, you know, the additional thing too, that the little secret weapon we have in our back pocket is council was expecting to pay some money for the acquisition of the property, and due to some innovative work by Mr. Fortowski, where he will do a little upzoning and horse trading and so on and so forth, so the fee simple ownership of the, of the land was essentially at low cost to the, to the district, so that's, that would be, in my opinion, a huge offer there as well, because we had planned to look at spending some money and acquiring it at one point, so it's kind of a nice, nice little added bonus for us. Obviously, I'm here at the discretion of council, do we want to hold off on public consultation, get some prices on the different scenarios we have in front of us now? Okay. Counselor Rob?
So, I'd just like to make a motion that we would proceed, and because obviously we get the feedback, and then we know what, what the main plan is, we can scale back from, from the Cadillac version to what we can afford as we go along. And I'm pretty sure that's typical in most, most ventures like this. So I think we need to move forward and get the momentum going. We don't want to leave this on hold, or the ways that we'll never get finished, and the prices don't actually really go down, so it's better to get on it and get moving forward. So I'm, I'm in favor of having that public consultation, and then like Mr. Fortowski suggested afterwards, get a, get a good feel for what the sticker's going to be, so we don't get sticker shocked.
I think that Mr. Fortowski's suggestion was get prices on all the scenarios now.
Right, no.
And then have public consultation.
No, no, no.
Correct? Because that is, that was my.
Your worship, that's correct. Where, where the prices are in the general concept, I mean, period, it's not a finalized project.
Okay, so we're all on board to kind of move forward, right?
No, no, I mean, your suggestion is polar opposite to Mr. Fortowski's suggestion, so we have to.
No, no, but I realize that he wants to get the prices first, but I'm saying, no, let's not do that. Let's go and have a look, see what the public says, and what we want at the end of the day, we'll have to come within some sort of reasonable budget anyways. So.
Well, there might be a, maybe a happy medium concept we can explore. The, the discussion was always we'd have a couple of public consultation meetings. So what we could do is before the next council meeting, we could have a quick guided walking tour of the facility, of the station house, for those that would like to partake, then have a, sort of a public meeting of sorts, public hearing of sorts, as to elements in that facility that would work well, then go to the assessment professionals that can give us some good costing, and then after we get the costing, we could have a final, okay, these are the three scenarios the public identified with council as workable, now we have to decide what can we afford. So essentially, that would be two public meetings, one to initial kick at it, then get the assessment professionals commissioned, and then after we get costs on, say, two or three scenarios, then we could have a follow-up public consultation meeting to decide, okay, these are the costs of the three scenarios or two scenarios, or whatever we decide.
There was talk too about user groups being consulted, so would they like to see the media of that cost as well, so where does that fit into the mix then?
Well, I would almost say that would be probably a public meeting number one, you know, they would partake with the rest of them.
Your worship, there's no reason why they combine the stakeholders and the public at the same meeting, they'll give their voice to the project.
Public as well, so.
Can I add here?
Yep, Counselor Stuhm?
So, I actually liked Mr. Fortowski's recommendation, because, you know, I've done that look-through-the-wish-book thing, and spent a million dollars, only to find I had five hundred. So, I do like your idea, but, it's not a lot, sorry, I really like the recommendation. I am open, however, to, to public consultations, with the disclosure at the first consultation, look, this is, this is the wish phase, and there will be some kind of a cap that's put on our wishes, and then at the next meeting, having the numbers. So I can support that recommendation to do the two public meetings.
Okay, so we have a mover, I guess you would be the second with the decision.
I can second that, yeah, I can support that.
Yeah, and then timelines would be in the next couple of weeks, I would assume, right?
For the first one.
For the first one, for the first public meeting.
I think as soon as we can put that in.
The 28th of November?
Well, I have to, I haven't got the delegation. Just we'll see how we can put it in. We bar pretty book, presentations coming forward to council to the end of the year.
We'll have a special meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we could have a special meeting, that's a good suggestion, so that's another option.
Let us try to rearrange a delegation or two before we suggest a special meeting. Let's plan for the 28th of November.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you say it, motion is in?
So the motion is to move forward on the mayor's recommendation, to have two public consultations, and what was the third thing?
Well, we would, we would have the initial public consultation, make sure the stakeholder groups are invited for that, they partake with the rest of the public, appropriate, then we commission necessary cost estimators, so that the item, the ideas that are identified, we can get some clarity as to how much it would cost if we move forward on the different scenarios, and then we would have a, a follow-up public meeting, could even be a regular part of a council meeting, just to start early, and then essentially table the anticipated costs, and then come up with some sort of public feedback, and council comfort level as to what we could move forward with, so.
Pretty, pretty lengthy motion, man.
Your, your worship, so we're not then tied to the, really, the 28th. We can hold a public consultation before the end of the month, and then we can, we gather the data from the consultation and present it to council at the first opportune moment, and then you can see what the public information and feedback was, and then decide moving forward which options to consider and cost forward.
May I make this addition? So, when we go back to Mr. Lawler with our options, that we actually go back maybe with just two options, and just so to scale it back, so for his time and consistency, I mean, we know whether or not we want to go three levels or two levels, and I think within that, we can confine it to what our options might be, because right now, I mean, we have four options, we can scale it back right now to three, you know? So I just, I want to be as efficient as possible, you know, given the fact that it is limited space and limited usage, it's just what goes where and what configuration.
The other thing I think that might be handy for council to consider, and when Mr. Fortowski and staff talk to the stakeholder groups, I think it's important too that we identify with the stakeholder groups what they're willing to bring to the table. We obviously recognize they're nonprofits for the most part, but, you know, what is their version of utilizing the basement? Would that be contributing five hundred dollars per month to use the room X number of times, or use it all the time, or what have you? I think there has to be some clarity there, because obviously, from a financial point of view, it would make sense for us to anticipate what kind of money is going to be flowing in. Now, I don't think any community group that uses it on a regular basis can assume it will be free, because that's really not, not an appropriate arrangement, so, you know, there would be some costs involved, but obviously we'd have to be, you know, respectful of the fact that the community groups are working on a limited budget, but if we want to work together as a community to make this happen, I think everyone's going to have to share a little bit in the cost, so I think that's an important discussion to have early on, because then we can decide on what our financial comfort level is. Counselor Stuhm?
Through you, along with that, we discussed this a while back, that we were supposed to sit down as council to discuss this ahead of time, so that the user groups know that there will be some costs associated, more than likely some costs associated once council makes the decision. It's our building, it's the District of Hope's building, so we should be able to sit down and make those decisions as economically as possible for the user groups, so it's not costing taxpayers money once this building's up. I think we have to sit down and discuss that. We don't ask them what they're looking for, we tell them what we're thinking, because we own the building.
Well, I guess in some ways, I think it has to be simultaneous conversation, because we don't know the, the finances of all the community groups are going to be keen on using this. They may say seventy-five dollars a use, or fifty dollars a use is appropriate, and we'd use it X number of times per month as a rule. But yeah, obviously, council is in the driver's seat, we will be deciding what the cost is to that, but.
We should sit down, right?
Yeah, but I think before we have the final plan identified as what's going in there, we have to figure out roughly how much money is going to be coming in on a monthly basis, because that will help offset the, you know, construction costs over time, so.
Can I make a suggestion? Is it possible that we look to our neighbors in Agassi and Cholak? I know that they have common space in their, kind of municipal building, for instance, that user groups can rent or utilize, so maybe just asking what they charge for a nonprofit rate or a business rate, so it gives us an idea workable.
Okay. You have motion on the table? All those in favor? Contract carries. Okay. Thank you very much. I think that was reasonably clear. Mr. Lawler, thank you very much. I'm forward to working with you. As you can see, a lot of people in the community are interested in this project, so that's a good thing. But I don't think, I don't think anyone in council or anyone in the community actually expects everyone in the District of Hope to be equally excited about the final product here, because there will be some people that still think it should have never happened, some people that think it should have been done a completely different way, and those in between, so this is not a consensus decision-making kind of a.
That is the nation's most projects.
Yeah, well, it's definitely going to be this one, I think. Two-minute break, and then we head into the council.